All right, welcome everybody to the July City of Franklin Municipal Planning Commission Meeting. Appreciate everybody coming. We'll first address the minutes from June's meeting if I can get a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move to second and in discussion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Ladies and gentlemen, we have an opportunity now during this portion of the meeting for citizen comments that are, for items that are not on the agenda tonight. If you would like to come forward and speak to the Planning Commission on, again, on items not on the agenda tonight, we'd be glad to listen to you. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the announcements. Mike, any announcements, Catherine, anything?
No, sir.
Okay, then we'll move past the announcements. All right, are there any items that staff knows of that need to be placed on the agenda that are not on agenda tonight? No? Okay. Then we'll move to the consent agenda. We have two consent agendas tonight. We'll have initial and a secondary. We'll start with the initial consents. Those are currently items seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and twenty-seven. And the applicants have requested to add items twenty-five and twenty-eight as a deferral for one month. So we'll add that to the agenda.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five and twenty-eight. Item twenty-five and twenty-eight would be deferred for one month, or to the next meeting. All right, is there anyone that wants to pull anything off the consent agenda? Anyone on the commission or staff, or anyone in the audience?
Self-interest.
All right, seeing none, then we'll vote on that agenda.
Move for approval.
I'm sorry, let's start with a motion, yeah.
Move for approval as amended to defer items twenty-five and twenty-eight to the next month's Planning Commission.
Move to the second and in discussion. All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. The secondary consent agenda includes items fourteen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. And I'm going to turn the chair over to Roger Lindsay as I have conflicts myself on eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. So Roger, I'll turn the chair to you.
Secondary consent agenda on those items that otherwise are contained for consent with the exception of those that have conflicts.
And I need to recuse myself from item number fourteen, so will not be voting on this consent item either.
Okay, so we'll handle then with a motion to approve these four items with the two members recusing themselves. I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Roger. Then we move to item number twenty-one. Ordinance 2010-55 to be entitled to rezonate 22.7 acres from low residential R1 to civic and institutional CI. The property located along Clovercroft Road and west of Bay Hill Circle. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this site is known as Breezeway Section Three, and it is currently approved for 29 dwelling units. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property from low residential R1 to civic and institutional in order to construct an approximately 119,500 square foot elementary school on the site. The staff recommendation for the rezoning is approval. However, it is important that the future plans submitted by the applicant address traffic concerns. The Franklin Land Use Plan recommends that proposed institutional uses in this character area mitigate traffic impacts through analysis and design to maintain or improve current level of service.
Okay, thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is an opportunity for you to address the commission. If you'd like to speak to the commission, we try to hold the comments down to two minutes each. And if you would, when you come forward, speak, tell us your name and where you live, and we'll be glad to listen to anybody that'd like to speak on this item. Just go ahead and come forward and speak at the podium, please, with a microphone so we can all hear you. If anybody else wants to speak, if you could line up, that would help keep this rolling along.
Hello, my name is Anthony Laura. I live over there. I have six, I have four grandchildren that are going to school in another area. Now, when we bought our house over there, it was beautiful. Now, all of a sudden, there's a school coming up that we found there. Now, we're not going to be able to get out of our development when this thing ties up because we seen a little bit of, on McEwen today, we seen that street back up. And it was, there was no reason why it backed up, you know? And it was about a block long. So if me and my son said, what happens if, you found out about the school only a couple of days ago? What happens when they put this school up here? What's going to be? I'm not going to be able to take my grandchildren to their school because Kate, whatever the name of development, needs a school for them. Why can't I go to the school where my children, you know, I intended my children, my grandchildren to go? You know those streets over there are not going to carry this amount of traffic. And so one of those buses flips over and hits a tree or an embankment there from people rushing to bring their kids to school, you know what's going to happen? And it's going to lie on all your heads, this thing. Because there's an accident, it's going to happen there. The roads cannot handle that traffic. They can't even handle single traffic going up, you know? Is there a study going to be made when you have estimated amount of cars dropping their children off, estimated amount of buses going there? And when the other schools open up, you've got to have the other cars on there, then put it all together before you rush pushing a school in the area and not worry about anybody else around there, you know? I don't think it's, I don't think it's considered anybody else's feelings and the total investment that's there. We know a guy paid 1.3 for a lot of land there, you know, which is a great buy. I paid a million dollars for my house, close to a million dollars. That's what I was putting furniture in. Now, everything's going to change for my kids? This was heaven for my children, this relocation. This was heaven for them. Now, all of a sudden, it's a disaster, it's, they're going to be tied up in New York traffic? What kind of nonsense is that? You've got to look out for everybody, not just the kids from there. My kids' safety, going to their school. And these kids, we want them to have a school, but you can't tell me there's not another place for an entrance or another site for this? I look in the paper, it says a done deal? What done deal? Anytime there's a done deal, something's being pushed, you know, to cover something. That's the way I see it.
Sir, can you wrap up your comments, please?
Okay, that's enough, you had enough?
Well, I didn't get sir, sir, I didn't get last name or address.
Excuse me, sir, we need your address.
Sir? Sir?
Your last name, please, I didn't get it.
Okay.
Sure.
Tell everyone else to go back. All right? Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Amber Zalinski. I'm a resident of Chardonnay. I've also been a speech-language pathologist for Williamson County Schools recently. I live across from where the proposed site is, and I helped to lead a neighborhood meeting on Sunday night to collect concerns of the neighborhood for Chardonnay. The main crux of their concerns include traffic and safety, and I appreciate that you all have asked for further traffic studies. I would request kindly that the board consider waiting until August 12th or later so that those traffic studies are representative of school transit times because it gets a lot more crowded during school drop-off and pickup. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Niech, and I live at 109 Bay Hill Circle in Breezeway. Actually, it would be the closest home to the proposed school. I have two comments. First of all, I would like everyone to know that it is extremely difficult now to go from Clovercroft onto Wilson Pike in the morning, you know, during commute time between 7:30 and 8:30. So there's an extreme amount of traffic right there. And I would also echo the same comments and say I would urge the board to hold off on any voting until the traffic studies are complete because that's one of the most important factors here, is whether or not the present roadways could handle additional volume. The second thing, and the second comment I have is, I understand that the county did buy the land without, you know, having it approved for, to be rezoned. And, you know, I don't think that they were forced to buy the land or they had to buy the land. It's approximately 5% of their budget what they have to invest in the school, and I don't think that, the fact that they already have the land and now they don't know what to do with it, if it's not going to get approved, I don't think is relevant at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we don't need the claps.
Please keep your comments to yourself so we can listen to each applicant here, please.
John Scott, I'm at 9341 Clovercroft, which is directly across the street from the proposed school. I feel like everybody here, whether you're at the Trinity School or whether you're in the Clovercroft area, we all know we need a new school, you know, it's obvious. But our concern is, is you can't build the school first and then worry about all of the other needs that are out there, the infrastructure, the streets. I mean, you're going to hear a lot of common themes tonight, and those are safety. I mean, the one, the one-lane tunnel, if we've got all the people from McKay's Mill coming through that one-way tunnel, it's, I mean, school buses can't get through there, so they have to use McEwen. There's also like a 45-degree, I guess, angle, or the road is a 45-degree straightaway, or it's just, I mean, when it snows, it's so icy. I mean, the safety is definitely number one. Secondly, we've got concerns with, there's a lot of personal concerns as far as rezoning that come, come out as far as the overall beauty of Clovercroft Road and the fact that there's no red lights or anything on there, and the road just curves gently along with the, the actual, the way the land flows. I mean, there's just so many things, and for us to just push this through right now, I think we need more conversation. We need more research. We need to know about the traffic. We need to know, I mean, right now, again, the second item is the traffic. I mean, it comes all the way to my house every morning between 7:00 and 7:30. There's no way for us to get out unless there's just this one, you gun it and you go. So I just, I, I hope everybody, we know we need a school. I think we question whether this is the right location for that school, and we hope we can do a little bit more due diligence and have a little bit of fiscal responsibility before we build something for $22 million. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laurian Scott. I live at 9341 Clovercroft Road as well, directly across. I would like it, if you wouldn't mind, to write these questions down and perhaps address the, address us and answer them at the end, if that would be okay, because I have some questions. I was told that in the earlier meeting that the Williamson County School District had taken some buses around and done kind of some sort of traffic study, and I was wondering, was that a proven methodology of traffic study and was it conducted by an objective organization? Also, just wondering, you know, again, accounting for traffic during the summer, which has been next to nil, it hasn't even, it hasn't even gotten past maybe, you know, a few cars in the summer, whereas, again, like my husband said, in the winter, it's all the way up to Breezeway. And that's because Nolansville traffic, Clovercroft is the main thoroughfare for Nolansville traffic. I don't know if all of you know that, but it's like a Speedway, people going from Nolansville to try to catch 65 where their main thoroughfare. Also, what time was that study done? Were they accounted, were they accounting for changes in elevation and curvatures as McEwen Road? I mean, we've lived in big cities, and we, I've never seen as dangerous a road. I mean, I don't like to take it with my daughter just because it's, it's the scariest road I've seen in Franklin. And it scares me that people would be taking that, and I was told that perhaps there wouldn't, there wouldn't be as many people taking buses because Trinity folks are perhaps scared of buses for their kids. And if so, I'm wondering about that because if there are fewer buses, that means there are more commuters and there are more people on McEwen, and people trying to kind of get through the one-way tunnel if McEwen is backed up all the time. So I'm wondering about that. Also wondering about emergency vehicles. I myself have had the misfortune of having to call an emergency vehicle three times since we've lived there in three years, and it scares the heck out of me that whether the school or resident, if they need an emergency vehicle during that period of time. For us, it was seconds, not minutes, that could make the difference, and fortunately, we had a hospital already set up in our, in our house. But if we hadn't had those, then we all would have been lost.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Okay. Other thing I'd like to ask is about noise pollution to such a pastoral community. Can you please tell me how they will address that? Because all of us can hear the birds right now, and it is, again, once a pastoral, that's what Franklin is, I mean, that's what this is, it's supposed to be, and I'm hoping that we won't continue to ruin beautiful places like Clovercroft. Another question I'd like you to answer is sewage. Again, I was told that for 800 people, it's okay, even though there were 29 houses, but you know, a lot, a lot of people in that pastoral community have gardens. We want to make sure that everything is okay, nothing is contaminated. And my last thing to say is, I would like to know if, when you vote for this, if you think personally that it was irresponsible for them to close on this land without having contingency on rezoning, and if you thought that was ethical or even a responsible use of taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
I'm Catherine Walsh, and I live on Bay Hill. And any given day last year, I could look out my window and see the traffic backed up past Bay Hill. So I can't imagine turning on to, turning right on and having a 20 mile an hour zone right there, traffic backing up, buses will not be able to get in, make left-hand turns into that. Chardonnay's not going to be able to make left-hand turns out of Chardonnay. So then you go on down the slope to McEwen. Now, up, I mean, to Wilson Pike, up the road is, is the high school. Nobody chooses to go to the high school because it's, again, 20 miles an hour. So they get on McEwen and go the steep route. You have got to drive that route if you have not. It has many, many steep, steep shoulders if a bus were to ever go off of that. This morning, 8 o'clock, driving to work, I was 40 cars deep to get on to Cool Springs. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sean Moore, and I live in Chardonnay. I think the theme is pretty common, right? It's traffic and safety. We're very worried about both. Safety, as, as you guys know, the infrastructure out there, we just don't see how it can support it. There's no shoulders on the roads. If you're 40 cars deep, how's an emergency vehicle going to get to the school and get to the children? Doesn't make any sense. We heard last, or Tuesday night, we heard the county basically say that the city had asked, thank you, for more traffic studies, but they weren't really compelled to adhere to those. We're, I guess what we're asking you is to put some sanity into the process. Stop it, not rush it through. Let's make sure we do our due diligence and do the right thing and take into account safety and traffic. And if we can alleviate all those, then great, let's move forward. If we can't, let's find another spot. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Brian Seeligar. I live at 9395 Clovercroft. And just to regress, digress a little bit, years ago, when Breezeway was, was trying to be approved through Franklin, it did get approved, but we had some success with that. And, you know, I definitely am here for my Breezeway buddies because, you know, we, I think we made the development better, and I hope that we can do that with this school potential process. But Pam Lewis, at the time, was an alderman, tried to set a moratorium on that particular area because the infrastructure was so bad. And, you know, it hadn't been too many months ago when they took down the sign that said "dangerous road, travel at your own risk." That was a sign that was on our road for many years, and that was taken down when the Breezeway development came because it's a county road, the drop-offs are incredibly five to seven foot deep. So with, with an alderman bringing up that, that wanted to, you know, potentially pass a moratorium for that area because the roads are so bad, I don't understand why you would even think of putting a school in that area. You have three actually dead-end roads. Clovercroft coming from the west to the east, dead ends into Wilson Pike. Clovercroft coming from the east to the west, dead ends into Wilson Pike. And McEwen, dead ends into Wilson Pike. I mean, that is no, there is no infrastructure in place for a school to start putting 500 kids immediately in that particular area. And the county talks about there's only going to be three buses on the road. This is a great deal. Three buses times 80 kids, 240 kids. They claim that there'll be an immediate, immediate impact of 500 students. That equates to 260 cars potentially, if there's not carpooling, coming and adding to that particular infrastructure. And if you understand the road process, they have the emergency vehicle set up correctly within their school, but the problem is the fire trucks and the police can't get there because of the McEwen dead end, the Clovercroft dead end, and the one-lane tunnel. So we might have all the safety precautions within the school, but they can't get there. My final comment is Bev Berger, who's actually our alderman in the area, at the time in '07, she tried to annex or at least get a surge for Franklin to annex that particular land, which is Chardonnay, to control that area so Franklin would have control of the infrastructure in that area and not allow developments. And now we're trying to put a school of 800 kids. That's three or four developments in size in 22 acres. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Gallagher. I live at 521 Federal Street, which is part of the Breezeway subdivision. I wanted to just address a couple of the comments that Mr. Fortney made earlier in the, this evening's presentation. A particular quote that he made was "the safety of the children is our primary concern." We share Mr. Fortney's concern with the safety of our children. We also share Mr. Fortney's concern relative to our own safety, those of us who live in this area. I think you've heard from my neighbors that we have some serious concerns that due to the substandard quality of the roads in this area, all of which have been mentioned repeatedly, those roads do not permit for our safety, the safe passage of our children, nor of those of us who live in the area. I'd also like to address some of the response times that were provided by our fire and police departments that ranged in the five to 10-minute range. I would submit that that is impossible to do during daylight hours. That may be possible in the middle of the night, but I would submit that it's impossible to do during the daylight hours with any amount of traffic. And then lastly, I'd like to say that, you know, we, it does seem as though this process has been rushed. In the public meeting earlier this week, there was some discussion about, this has been a three-year process to examine options and alternatives for the placement of this much-needed school. If that's the case, I have difficulty reconciling this three-year process with the need now to move so expeditiously through this process, and we would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
My name is John Rutledge. I live at 2000 John J. Court. Bought my property in '82 and have enjoyed living there many, many years. Over the years, we've noticed a lot of traffic changes, a lot of it's coming from Rutherford County. A lot of it comes now from Nolansville. We've also noticed a pattern change. We used to see traffic coming from Franklin going over to the plant in Smyrna as well, so it goes both ways. The road infrastructure is undoubtedly substandard, and I know a lot of it is a county issue, but unfortunately, the city has to share some of that responsibility. It's taken forever for the pavement to be done on McEwen. And that was only because somebody finally did the right thing and made the issue better. We still have issues with that guardrail up there. I saw a car go off that guardrail at the very top of McEwen. If it hadn't been for the edge of that guardrail, they would have gone down in that ravine and they would have been dead. And I happen to be very personally involved with that because I'm in the insurance business and happened to be one of my clients. Very much in tune with the idea that safety needs to be addressed. I appreciate the consideration. Also appreciate the idea that if you don't live there, you don't live it, you don't understand it. You've got to come over and understand what's going on with us in that part of the county. We are desperately in need of infrastructure improvements, and until we get that, I could not recommend putting an elementary school in that location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Teresa Yingling, and I'm at 9357 Clovercroft Road, and I'm across the street from Breezeway Community. And again, I'd just like to say that it is very busy in the morning, that it does back up, and we all are concerned for safety trying to get out of our roads. And also, I'd like to comment that I've also noticed at some of the schools, they leave their buses there 365 days a week, and according to the plan, the bus parking would be right in front. So I'm a little concerned that I'm going to have a bus depot, you know, pulling out of my driveway. And please, you know, take into consideration the people who live in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mike Gill. I live in the Chardonnay area. Just to kind of echo the other sentiments that have been addressed here tonight, the two chief concerns are safety and traffic. This school is to relieve the overcrowdiness at Trinity, which is needed. However, if the kids who are going to, to basically attend this new school are coming from the McKay's Mill area, they're going to have two choices, the one-lane tunnel and McEwen. As we know, the buses can't fit through the one-lane tunnel. The McEwen itself will stack up 40 to 60 cars deep during rush hour, turning onto Wilson Pike. There are also concerns with emergency vehicles. How will they respond appropriately if there is an accident? Children are young, you know, we're talking about five-year-olds. They may suffer for, they're introduced to new foods, they may suffer an attack for the first time. How is an emergency vehicle going to respond when there are 50 cars stacked up on McEwen? These are the type of concerns. I have a six-year-old who will be a first grader, and, you know, having a school across the street would not be a terrible idea for us. However, the way it's currently planned, which in our eyes is a lack of a plan for the infrastructure, would severely hurt the students attending the school. The other concern is just the traffic itself. It's very busy. The cars stack up going from Clovercroft to Wilson. You have Ravenwood High School, a lot of students are coming from Nolansville High School. So you have 17, 16, 17, 18-year-olds speeding down Clovercroft, making sharp turns, inclines, declines, right next to a school. So you're going to have that traffic and the elementary school traffic both hitting a two-lane road every single day. And then finally, to a lesser extent, and this is my last comment here, would you please address after the comments, the sewer improvements? At the meeting on Tuesday, the school or the Williamson County, Mr. Fortney, said that 800 students is comparable to 29 lots that were planned at Breezeway. So our concern is how, you know, how does that equate the 800 students plus the teachers and the admin, the office workers, to the 29 lots? I think that there's going to have to be possibly some hidden costs with improving the sewer structure. We need to do some analysis on the land to make sure that the land can support it, and I would just really appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much for having us tonight.
My name is John Walsh. I live at 111 Bay Hill Circle. Before I begin, I'd like to just comment and thank the mayor. The other night at the meeting, I think the format when we walked in was there wasn't going to be any type of comments, but I think, and if I'm, if I've made an erroneous assumption or wrong, please correct me, but it was, it was, I think, an important issue to be able to speak at that meeting and be heard. So I think whoever made that happen, I appreciate it. One of the, a couple of issues. I think primarily I'm looking at the traffic access I think primarily I'm looking at the traffic access study that was made, and I think when you look at that, it was, I have some serious questions on some of the information that was provided, how the study was conducted, when it was conducted, what some of the planning assumptions were. I have noticed that there is no mention in the plan at all of Bay Hill Circle, which will be an access point and an egress point in that. When you start looking at the queuing framework that was made, it's done in seconds when you start looking at the length of cars, the number of cars, and it's all very quantifiable data. And when you get studies like this and they're done probably very rushed, because I know it was done in June at a time that really doesn't even reflect the accuracy and the reality of the situation, so you get a very sterile type of report. So I would encourage planning department to really take some serious looks of how this was conducted and some of the assumptions. One of the things you have to look at is when this whole issue is being looked at and justified, bad decisions and bad information that previously schools were built and where they were built, things of that nature, don't justify future development and future considerations. So I hope that when you look at that, just because it's been, you know, there's been decisions made and you have schools in certain places. From a safety standpoint, I'm an educator. I educate on hazardous events and preparedness. I can assure you in my professional opinion and my academic opinion, this is a horrible sight. There are a number of hazards in this area, the drop-off points, the topography of the streets, the roads, the limited access. From a public safety standpoint, there are a number of issues that need to be seriously looked at. It's not just about accidents of buses. It's not buses that I worry about, it's the general public. And when you start looking at the human factors and put into planning and look at the possibilities, there are any number of things that can happen. Those roads are narrow, if there's an accident, it will prevent, especially if there's traffic, prevent access. I've seen it there on.
Sir, can you wrap up your comments, please?
Okay, thank you. The only one other issue that I would like to address is there was a presentation tonight about bus turning on from McEwen on to Wilson Pike. Folks, you have to look at the reality of situation. If you take an 80-seat bus and try to keep, turn that bus at that intersection and keep it in the lanes where it is not a hazard to either cross traffic, I think you really have to look at the situation on that. So please take a close look at planning and the hazards and the vulnerability that are out there in that community. Thank you.
I am Kathy Weber, and I live at 1900 Springcroft Drive. The only issues I want to address are the onset of the Breezeway development. When it first started, there were a lot of restrictions put on for the land relative to, from TDEC and also from your Maze Creek Basin study. And I just want to address two issues, maybe you can discuss them when you're getting ready to vote, but I'd like to know if this situation still exists. And it, from the Maze Creek study, that was, I think Reed and Steckman, I believe is who you used, but it says, "In considering options of wastewater treatment and disposal for the sewage generated in this basin, the study recommends that the city consider what is appropriate location for additional treatment to serve new customers as newly developed areas come online. Any evaluation considered should not only include treatment options for the wastewater, but most importantly, identify and plan for the disposal options for the treated wastewater. And the options for treatment and disposal included, provide increased wastewater treatment capacity at the existing wastewater treatment plant." My question is, has that been done? Is that in the process of being done? Have you identified that that needs done? Increase the capacity of the sanitary sewer collective system required to deliver this flow to the existing plant and continue to expand and reclaim water systems throughout the city. The existing sanitary sewer collection system has not been designed with sufficient capacity to accommodate flows from the Maze Creek Basin. Sending wastewater from this area to the existing treatment plant could be accomplished by installing additional collective system capacity to the central city plant, but would prove very expensive due to the large diameter pipes, which is 36 inches minimum, and long distances such as 8.8 miles. And the last issue is on a Global Green Consulting study, when there was an environmental, and I'll wrap this up, is one statement that they were talking about is that the utility line constructed will likely require blasting because of the extreme shallow bedrock conditions. Blasting will fracture the bedrock and allow percolated water to sink. The proposed sewer and water line trenches will likely intercept the shallow groundwater that flows near the top of the bedrock, and that intercepted flow will likely be diverted away from nearby stream channels, resulting in a loss of base flow. So I'd just like for you to address these and find out if in fact these issues were addressed before the purchase of the land was even made. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sangram Chawan, and my house will be right on the Federal Street, so Driz Holmes is building my new house. Actually, one of the main reasons I moved from San Francisco Bay Area was this beautiful area and the beautiful city of Franklin. And everybody so far has talked about the hazardous situation and conditions on that road, but I actually witnessed hazardous condition or one incident right on the day when I signed the contract with the Driz. Actually, I was there on the first of May when we had these rains and the floods and the entire Wilson Pike and the Clorecroft intersection was flooded. And all the traffics were blocked up, and even the emergency responders were not able to get inside that intersection to help the people who are blocked in that flood. So there were like two or three cars were blocked, and entire area was like backed up till probably McEwen. So my request is when you do the study for the traffic analysis and the planning, you should consider these new flood lines defined by these latest floods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Gatska. I'm at 9518 Clovercroft Road. I'm a little farther down from the property that is being proposed for the school. Nothing has been addressed so far that I have heard regarding traffic coming up from Tullis Road. That is a worse road than McEwen is, and that always goes down and connect to Trinity Road, which will go down to 96. Now, some of the traffic is going to be coming from that area because of the rezoning of the school. That's going to bring a lot of traffic up those really, really bad roads. Another issue I want to bring up is the fact that it was addressed by the school district that they will have a guard at the entrance of the school to allow the traffic to come in and out in the morning and the afternoon. Well, my daughter goes to Kenrose right now, and there's probably, the school year, probably maybe two-thirds of the time, there is a guard there, maybe. So you're talking about stopping traffic, allowing all that traffic to come out of the school, plus the buses, and be able to back all that traffic up to Wilson Pike. Well, that's going to really back everything all up farther down Clovercroft and really create a real other disaster. Another issue is this project needs to be really put on hold until another thoroughfare like the McEwen extension is brought online, be able to take some of the overflow from the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rob Zalinski. I live at 9018 Chardonnay, which is three houses in at the entrance of Chardonnay, pretty close to where the entry point and the crosswalk would be situated for this school according to plans that I took a look at. A couple of points I would like to make. One is, I certainly feel, and I think most of my friends and neighbors that I've discussed this with, feel strongly that the kids at the Trinity School are overcrowded and they do need relief, and that's not a good situation. Everybody gets that. I think everybody understands the need for the school system to be able to expand. Everybody who lives, not everybody, a lot of people who live here and have looked around though, do have, as you've heard tonight, some serious safety concerns. I'd like to illustrate one more, and I'd like to reiterate the theme that it's difficult to really understand this if you haven't walked it and if you haven't looked at it. For example, on this blueprint, we don't have any topography that I see, but if you take a look here, this point is the exit from Chardonnay, and it's also the entry point into a parking lot that you see in the school. Okay? In the plan that I saw, there's supposed to be a crosswalk with a crossing guard here, and 300 feet on either side, they're going to be flashing lights and say, "School zone, slow down." I think 20 miles an hour is what I read. So 300 feet is about 100 yards. That gets you out to about this point. And at about 120 yards from this exit from Chardonnay is the crest of this hill. There's a significant elevation going from west to east on Clovercroft. You can't even see the area where this crosswalk would be until you achieve the crest of that hill. So that's about 125 yards, so 375 feet. With no traffic there, looking at cars the other evening, I timed six cars, it took them an average of just under three seconds to cover that distance. My concern is if this goes in place as it is, there's a significant safety concern, especially if it's backed up with cars, there's going to be very little time for people to react once they can see what's going on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Schrader, and I too live in Chardonnay. And I just want to share a couple of things because we have not even reached our one-year anniversary with living in Tennessee. That will not be for a couple more months. I think the school is actually a good idea. I've lived in other subdivisions that had the schools inside. Unfortunately, the wrong infrastructure is in place for the school. So it can work with sidewalks and, you know, people here know what the street should look like and crossing guards and not sharp drop-offs on either side to protect not only the children, and they're our most concerned foremost, but also the drivers and the impact that would have on somebody if there was a fatality. I have to tell you, we moved from Iowa, and we moved with the promise of this great weather, so I was really shocked this winter when the weather did something that was as bad as it was in Iowa. So we came here equipped with an all-wheel-drive car, and after a particular incident I had on McEwen coming home from work, I have swore McEwen off at certain times if it's raining really hard, if it's really dark, if it's really misty, if it's really hot, what have you, because it truly is a danger. So we need to consider that and not consider it just in optimum situations. Lastly, the business that I am in is a medium-sized manufacturing, is headquartered here in Franklin, and I also was a safety engineer for a large automotive company. I have to tell you, this very much feels like the Toyota thing that we all have watched on TV, that now we all sit there and we're saying, "We can't believe they heard all of this bad stuff," and they knew it, and they took financials, or they took a plan, or they bought a piece of property, and they steady move forward. And so now, as we see people who accelerator may have the issue or don't have the issue, and we've tied lives to it, I bet you everybody in this room has watched TV and been very critical, and it's based on information of what I hear, that somebody somewhere had knowledge and still moved forward. I'll tell you personally, if I had this kind of information come to me in my current position as a HR director, and certainly in my former position as a safety engineer, and I still progressed, you could be sure that I would be standing in Franklin, Tennessee unemployed. So I want to just tell you, this is reality. This is not a joke for us and all the people who've come out. This is not a movie. This is not like the Field of Dreams, build it and they'll come. We need to have a concerted approach and make sure that we are taking all of these things into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Dedman, and apparently I'm the lone McKay's Mill representative here tonight. I live in McKay's Mill, and I have a seven and a five-year-old. The seven-year-old attended Trinity, and the five-year-old will be attending Trinity. We know there's an overcrowding issue. We know that there's a traffic issue. We know that there's a safety issue, but at the end of the day, the meeting that we're here tonight for is a rezoning issue. The property has been zoned as low residential at this point. And the reason I think that we all know that is because this is not going to be supported by what is out there now. So I think what you need to consider and what we hope you will consider is how this rezoning will affect all of the properties surrounding it, the roads, the sewers, the homes, the residents, and most importantly, the children. So we just ask that you take all the comments that have been made tonight into consideration before you make any decision. We would love for you to wait for those traffic studies, and we just thank you for having us here.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, saying none, is there someone here to represent the applicant?
Chairman members of the Planning Commission, my name is Charlie Johnson. I'm with Johnson and Bailey Architects. We're the architects for Williamson County Schools and have designed this project for them. Michael, what do I do about a clicker? Do I not have one now? Okay, all right. At the previous meeting, we talked about the statistical data for this school, and I'd like to review that briefly. The school is designed for a capacity of 800 students, has 119,000 square feet, capacity for 145 cars parking, nine buses, and those buses load in this lot in airplane fashion. The buses all come independent of each other, but they leave at the same time. So when the, when school is over, the buses load and all nine buses pull out at the same time. That's when the crossing guard or the sheriff's deputy make sure that traffic is held up for those buses. The car riders enter on a road that aligns directly with Chardonnay. There is stacking for 122 cars onsite before there's any backup out on to the street. That is excluding the connection to Breezeway, which is right there at the top. And that connection to Breezeway is done for the convenience of the residents if they desire to use it. It is also a secondary fire department access to the building. The school district has no objection to that roadway being blocked off with removable bollards to prevent people from using Breezeway as a cut-through. The, one of the things that I think needs to be noted is that at the very top of this drawing is where the extension of McEwen is proposed to be. Now, I realize that none of us know when that's going to occur, but Breezeway is planned to connect to the McEwen extension. So that will provide a secondary access to this school site. The building itself is identical to Perry Creek Elementary in the West Haven community. If y'all have not seen that, it is a, has a residential character that was designed to blend with a residential community that was already there. The school district has elected to reuse that design because of the favorable public reception of that school. It is quite a bit different than their other elementary schools and fits in a residential environment much better than some of the more institutional designs they had used in the past. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion for this project?
Move for approval.
Okay, been moved in a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in a second, any discussion?
Staff, if I may ask, at the meeting before, there was talk of traffic studies that were requested, and I do believe the applicant said that they wanted, or they preferred to wait until after school had started, so after August 12th, to conduct these traffic studies. Can you please clarify for me, because I want to make sure that I have the right information on that? We have requested traffic studies, is that correct?
Yes, we have.
When is the deadline that was given to the applicant? Will the applicant have a chance to conduct these studies after school starts, or is there a timeline? What's the timeline on that?
There were no, there was no timeline placed on those studies. We just asked a couple of days ago, when we received some studies and they weren't expansive enough, we asked for additional studies.
Okay.
So the request would...
So the request would, the request wouldn't necessarily be before August, before August the 12th or after August the 12th. And it wouldn't necessarily, I guess what I'm getting to is it, it's not such that it, that you, that it's going to delay the project long enough that you're going to impact the building of the school. You, in other words, I would like to set a deadline on the traffic studies if you were going to request another half a dozen.
The site, yeah, Carol can answer, but the site plan will also be coming back to you, and that won't be coming to you until the meeting in August.
So site plan meeting on August?
August, yes.
Did I answer a question?
Yes. If the, if the traffic studies are done after August 12th, will we have them by the August Planning Commission meeting?
Yeah. That I don't know.
Yes, the timeline for the second submittal, for the final submittal for the August meeting would occur prior to August 12th.
Certainly.
So now?
So the update to the traffic study would be due August 5th, I believe, is the deadline date.
All right, any other discussion?
Okay.
Okay.
Carl?
Go ahead, Ron.
The, the concerns with the traffic study as submitted, but could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, it was, it was of limited scope. We've asked in our review of the initial submittal to expand the, the scope, the influence area of the study to go broader out from just the Clovercroft Road corridor, to go up and down Wilson Pike, and also to look at the Bay Hill Circle intersections, and also specifically to look at the railroad underpass on Clovercroft Road. So those are specific additional elements we're requesting in the study.
To the extent that they discussed the traffic-carrying capability of, of these roads and, other than turn lanes and things like that, that we're addressing any of the concerns that are being raised about width of the roadways and, and narrow shoulders and things like that?
Well, traffic study primarily focuses on the ability of the roads to carry the traffic.
Right.
To a lesser extent, the safety implications of carrying the traffic. What, what the traffic study would investigate primarily is things like turn lanes, stacking lengths, maybe some modifications in traffic controls, additional stop signs, maybe some traffic signals. Look at the traffic control. Obviously, to do safety-type improvements on the roads in this area would be a serious McEwen Drive, when, I think it was McKay's Mill, no, it was Avalon, the meet at Avalon, there were some spot improvements made on McEwen Drive in association with approving that development. And that's why we have some wider pavement, some guard rail out there today.
Okay, the traffic study that was sent to us, who was that provided by? Was that provided by the applicant?
The applicant, yes, hired a consultant to do the traffic study.
All right, any other comments?
One other comment. I, I guess I drove Clovercroft today, in the tunnel today, and, and back McEwen, and most everything, or if not all of everything that was said tonight is probably 90% accurate. Those roads are certainly narrow. There's certainly a great deal of traffic out there. And again, part of that, part of that has to fall back on the city, because we've gone out and we've approved things that without requiring and/or making sure that some of the road improvements were done that we knew need to be done. That, that's, I'm just, that's just my, my confession for what we were into tonight. I'm, I'm just not comfortable that we've answered all of the questions, enough of the questions tonight, and satisfied enough that we need, that, that we need to have a school out there. I think there's going to be a school built, but I'm not sure that that school necessarily has to open up in August of 2011. And I'm not sure that what we do tonight doesn't maybe, hopefully, make it better if we're asking the specific questions, and we've listened to many of the people that have got up and spoken tonight. And it's possible, it's possible that they, the county school system or the county may not even need the approval of this body to begin with. And so, you know, we may be just here spinning our wheels on something until we actually find out for sure on that. I would prefer to see the traffic studies in. I'd prefer to see a little bit more information gathered as far as turn lanes are concerned, as far as things. And I know that, I know the school system is under the gun. I, I know that we're under the gun to, to have schools built and accommodate. And really and truly, when you, when you look, and I smile when I look out there, most of you have the kids that are going to the school. It's overcrowded, the Trinity schools to begin with. So that's, you know, that, that's kind of the way that is. But I would prefer to have those traffic studies in place where we can look at them, staff comments on those things. I'm certainly not going to analyze one. I'll look at it, but that's where we've got people in place to do that. So I would like to see, if it's at all possible, I'd like to see us not necessarily approve this tonight, but we wait at least until we have a traffic study or traffic studies in hand. And that, that may squeeze the school system to the point where they are not able to complete by August of 2011. If it does, then I apologize for that.
I'd like to add to that, too, that specifically, or specific off-site infrastructure items are typically not addressed until the regulating plan.
Yep.
But it's my opinion that there are critical issues here that do and should be addressed prior to this rezoning because they're so related, directly related to each other. And I, I think that it is a good decision to hold on this until we have some additional information.
Exactly.
I don't, I don't know that not going ahead and rezoning it tonight is really going to affect anything. You can adjust some of the other items, traffic improvements and like that with the site plan and regulating plans. You could always get rezoned and never get built, but by rezoning it, you're not guaranteeing it's going to get built either.
Can we also say this is really recommending to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to rezonate?
Well, true.
Well, we should have said that, I guess, at the beginning.
It's true.
How come nobody said, what if that's a safe change?
Sir, it's not the right time to be talking.
It's like the last thing.
All right.
The children are everything.
Sir, please. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor of the rezoning, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
The noes have it.
Hands.
So Mr. Harrison and Mr. Orr vote no?
Yes.
Vote yes, I'm sorry. So the motion fails? All right, Shawna, do we need to then consider the concept plan if the zoning fails?
You may, too, because even though you voted to not recommend it to BOMA, it's still going to BOMA next Tuesday.
Hands down.
Okay, all right. Then we will move on to item number 22, Resolution 2010-61, Resolution approving a concept plan for Breezeway subdivision elementary school totaling 22.7 acres located along Clovercroft Road west of Bay Hill Circle by the city of Franklin, Tennessee.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, this is the concept plan that's associated with the rezoning that you just heard. Staff recommends approval with conditions with the comment that proposed location at the Breezeway Elementary School is problematic in terms of transportation service and safety, and that should be further studied.
Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is another opportunity. Obviously, we heard in the first item meeting your concerns, but if there's new items that you want to address, this is an opportunity to do that. And please do make it a new item. Please.
Yes, my name is John Walsh. One area that I, I've, we've heard a lot of things about this development, so I can't tell you for a fact if it's true or not, but one of the areas that I have heard that the streets in the Breezeway addition had, did not meet code. I don't know if that's factual, but that is something that I would like the city to at least take a look at, and if I could get an answer to that, not tonight necessarily, but, but that's my understanding, is that those streets were not made to code. Thank you.
All right, well, that's sort of irrelevant to the school discussion, but any other comments?
I can't necessarily tell on this one, but when I saw it in my hands the other day, they had, and I'm hoping that landscaping is also part of this concept, but they had all the landscaping at the back against the tree line. So, I mean, all of the landscaping was against the existing trees. So I'm wondering, again, with noise pollution, you know, I mean, you know, we're hoping that we can also have some measure of peace if this gosh-forsaken thing happens. So will they, will they dedicate more of the trees to the fronts and the sides and that sort of thing as opposed to all along the existing tree line, which doesn't seem to make sense?
Thank you. That would be a site plan approval process issue, so we'll deal with that later. Yes, sir.
Just one quick comment. If McEwen Extension was a part of the master plan for Franklin, I don't think you would have very few people that would be opposed to the school if the McEwen Extension was in place, because it would provide all the infrastructure to allow these students and kids and families to get to school safe. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? Seeing none, is there, the applicant would like to speak? Would the applicant like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members. Appreciate your time this evening. I'm Kevin Fortney. I'm Director of Facilities and Construction for Williamson County Schools. I wanted to take a moment and address the, some of the issues on the safety concerns that the residents have expressed tonight. First of all, the traffic studies that we did complete were performed during non-school days. That's because we're trying to get this online. However, our traffic engineer did take into consideration by, of, of what the added traffic would be from the school and added that approximate population of 50%, that would be car riders, added that to that traffic study. So if you would go through, if, when you go through that traffic study, I think it indicates that. We did limit our studies to, it did include the entrance there to Breezeway, which is right here. It included this intersection right here, and it included Wilson Pike and Clovercroft Road. There are left turn lanes that are established in here. There's a comment tonight about the signalization, which is going to be, we space that generally 300 feet, okay? That can be spaced even more. They're site-specific. If there's concern on that, we can surely adjust and go further down with additional warning signals and so forth. Another question that came up was the road at the back of the school. This was placed here basically as a convenience to the residents of the Breezeway subdivision to prevent them from having to come out here and then back in, you know, to the school to drop off children. It's not a road that we have to, we would like to have the stacking capability, and also we would like to have the third entrance for, you know, emergency vehicles, fire trucks and so forth. That could be established with collapsible or, or, you know, knock-down type barricade that an emergency vehicle could get through there, and then it'd be, just be built as it is, but restricted to people walking to school or riding bikes and so forth. Landscape, that was addressed tonight also. In addressing the landscaping, we're open to where that landscape goes. We're following City of Franklin requirements for landscaping and where it has to be. We don't want to disturb trees, and we can place tree shrubs in various locations. Again, a lot of, a lot of discussion about safety conditions. We talked earlier during the work session and explained that our district drives a total of 2,173,000 miles a year, thereabouts. And in the last school year, we've had one school bus accident. That's a pretty impressive record, in my opinion. We are concerned about safety. We are concerned about the roads. We, we do look at road conditions within our district. It's a priority of our transportation department to route those buses in the safest manner possible. We also, as a county school district, have to deal with the local infrastructure that's provided to us. There are no conditions that are set aside for developers and so forth, that they set aside land and set aside spaces for schools to build, build buildings on. There is a lot of potential for growth in that area. A school won't only just serve the Kenrose or the Trinity School children, but it's likely it's going to be serving children that are in Kenrose because of the fact that Kenrose is getting flooded again. So I understand all the concerns, and I wanted to express that we are also concerned with the neighbors and, and how they are expressing their comments. And that's about all. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Move to second and discussion. All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, Ms. Peterson and Mr. Gamble, vote no, but motion, motion passes. Ms. Peterson, did you vote no?
I voted no.
You voted no?
I voted no.
Okay. All right, so motion passes.
Alma voted no.
That's right, Alma, Greg, and Ms. Peterson. All right, motion passes. All right, item number 23, Ordinance 2010-38, to be entitled, ordinance to rezone 0.7 acres from medium residential R2 to residential variety for property located along Eddie Lane between Glen Court and Lucinda Court. Staff, if you want to wait a minute, we'll, we'll let the folks leave.
And this is a bit of a unique situation, but the applicant is requesting to rezonate the property from medium residential to residential variety in order to construct one single-family dwelling unit on the site. Right now, there are two existing lots, and they're not large enough to create three new lots that meet the minimum lot size requirements of the R2 zoning district. The applicant has requested the rezoning in order to just create that one single-family lot, and there are two existing duplexes on the lots right now. RX is the only residential zoning district where the duplexes would be allowed. So in order to come into compliance with the zoning ordinance, RX is the only option for the applicant. And the applicant in the next item will be requesting for a total density of five units, and four of those dwelling units are existing right now.
Okay. All right, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this item? Okay, is there an applicant present tonight?
Brian Hamilton, 6215 Brownlee Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. Applicant for this project, here to answer any questions.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think I forgot to say that staff recommends approval of the rezoning.
Okay. Thank you. All right, is there a motion?
Second.
Move to second and in discussion?
I do have a discussion, I mean, a question for you. How is this not, how does this not qualify as a spot rezoning? Which is, you know, when there's things we run from screaming, "No, we can't do that."
It's actually not considered a spot rezoning because it's a, basically a planned residential development.
Okay, so it's.
So it's RX, it's the only one that allows the. So, it's RX, it's the only one that allows the existing condition with the duplexes. So, that's why, they're doing a single-family detached residence, but the only way that they can do it and be in compliance with regulations.
Is for that to be ours. Okay, I just wanted to be sure, because somebody's going to ask.
Yeah, good question.
Thank you for saying that, because that was one of the things I was going to say. First of all, the comments from the neighbors on this have generally were favorable, I mean, or say all favorable, really. The only thing that I have a concern about is, and we've stated this before in some other situations, there's a rezoning and a concept plan, and this may be another one of those places where the concept plan opt to follow along with it to say that the specific density there, because, you know, if you're just rezoning to RX, then they could come back and ask for many variations of the density. This one is the appropriate one, because there are already two duplexes on this. But as I say, this is another example of why we really need to have those moving together on this. I do have a bit of a concern about the spot zoning, to have another way of calling it, because everything in the immediate area is single-family, I think, except for these two duplexes. I believe they are. But is that right in the immediate area?
I think there's a, there's a duplex on Eddie, too.
Okay. But what I'm saying is, residential variety, you know, doesn't have a density associated with it, so technically, but as for a lot of things. So, if we had it where we had both of these together, I'd say perfect, you know, but that is, I just wanted to bring that up, too. As I say, as far as I know, the neighbors thought that this would be a good thing.
Okay, great. Any other comments?
No, no drainage issues, water issues, and that, because on the other side of the road.
Oh, yeah.
That's some other place over there. That's a problem, yeah.
Good, any other thoughts? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, item 24, Resolution 2010-39, a resolution approving a concept plan for Eddie Thompson PUD totaling 0.7 acres located along Eddie Lane between Glenda Court, Glencoe Court, and Lucinda Court. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, again, same story as the last item. They are requesting a density of five dwelling units. Four dwelling units currently exist on the property, and staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this item? Applicant, still the same applicant? Any other comments you want to add?
No, it seems like it's, it seems like it's appropriate with the long-range plan of the area, as staff recommends.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Go for it. Second.
Moved in second and in discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item 26, Boyd Mill Cottage Subdivision Preliminary Platte, 17 lots with nine buildable lots and eight non-buildable open-space lots on 3.33 acres located at 410 Boyd Mill Avenue. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends approval of this preliminary plat.
All right, is there anyone in the audience or the applicant that wants to speak to this item?
I'm Damon Rogers at 505 Boyd Mill Avenue, and it felt like I fought the law when the law's winning. I know they are within their rights, being an R3 district, which many of the neighbors discovered we were R3. We had not realized that. I do know that they are within their rights of putting the density of homes that they want to at this particularly, particular property. However, I state again, I would like for them not to put as many homes onto that particular property. We had a meeting with the developers Monday night, a very wonderful meeting, and the density had not changed. All of the plans had changed a little bit. The density is still the same, meaning eight new homes with one existing home on the property. The majority of the neighbors that did come, their big concern, of course, was A, density, and B, the two homes that are up close towards the Boyd Mill Street. So, if they could just remove those two homes, I think everybody would be happy in the neighborhood. That would give them six new homes plus the existing home. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Tim Kearns. I'm chairman of the Historic Zoning Commission, and this property lays in the historic zoning overlay, so I thought I'd discuss it and kind of tell you the conclusion we came to for the benefit of the, your commission. I'm reading out of the Franklin Historic Design Guidelines, just slight, the Boyd Mill Avenue Local Historic District. The dwellings there are, consist of a diverse collection of colonial revival folk Victorian bungalow residents that were constructed in the early through the mid-20th century. The key characteristics, there's one- and two-story detached houses, mixed styles are present, including Queen Anne Craftsman Colonial Revival and Ranch, sidewalks on one side of the street, front side backyards with lawns, walkways from sidewalk to entrances, et cetera, et cetera. At the bottom of this, it says, "The design and goal policies for the Historic Commission is preserve and maintain the historic buildings, preserve the neighborhood's residential character, and ensure that new landscape elements support the existing character." And so, obviously, we don't control density, and so, we can't, we have to consider what we're given. So, we consider the setbacks, and the very front home is 60 feet, or 63 feet, actually, compared to some of the other homes along the district in the close proximity, which were actually closer, within 60 feet. There's apartments next door, the private lot on the right that's indicated on this sign. Our apartments not generally considered anything historic in the grand scheme of things in the downtown district. The elevation of the property actually falls to the back, and so, the homes theoretically would disappear as they go backwards, given some landscape and other things, which is also something else we suggested, is they buffer it with some landscaping, so it's not as, the density is not as apparent as you're driving down Boyd Mill, and that's really our biggest concern. The building designs that were brought to us in March and April were actually very compatible to the other historic homes in the neighborhood. And if it is approved by this commission, we actually will continue to give architectural design approval for everything. Every home has to come in front of us. And so, we actually proposed in a letter to you on April 13 regarding this applicant who came before us in March and again in April, and just for our recommendation, the planning commission was a street width we recommended 20 feet. Again, we have no control over that. That's merely a request on our behalf. No type of curb gutter or sidewalk. And the consensus of the Historic Zoning Commission was, six commissioners are in favor of the proposed development. One commissioner was concerned about the density. So, for your benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for what you do for the city, too.
Hello? I'm Lucinda Harshi. I live at 504 Boyd Mill, four doors down from the proposed building. I found out we were R3 this one, with this development, just like most of my neighbors. And I had a bunch of questions that I've made note of. The first one is that it's 17 lots, nine buildable, and eight non-buildable. What's to keep that from being changed in the future? That was just a concern. Could they build on those eventually? Sometime, things change, and they build on those eight non-buildable lots. I do have concern about the density. Our block of Boyd Mill is between Jim Warren Park and 11th Street. The parade route goes down our block. Every time there's a parade, they end up in Jim Warren Park, and they walk down our block. It's also the big sports facility for the community, and so, we already have a lot of non-residential traffic that goes down Boyd Mill. Saturdays are particularly busy. We have sidewalks on one side of the street, the opposite side from this development. So, that's a concern. As Damon mentioned, the setback is a concern. The front two houses in the proposal will actually be well in front of the neighboring My house currently is one of the closest to the street. It would be well in front of my house as well. We do have multiple housing, multi-unit housing at both ends of the street during a period of time when apparently Franklin wasn't as rigid in their, in their planning as they are now. We have to get fencing approved, landscaping approved, any changes to the house, any architectural things to the house. I'm thinking, how could this possibly be historic if we're adding new, even though they're adorable cottages? I've seen the drawings. They're very cute. And the other thing is, since we are zoned R3, I happen to own an acre. What's to prevent me from selling my house to a developer and plopping a new house in the front house, in the front yard, and another one in the back, or any other, any other block, house on the block? It does strike me as a precedent that needs to be considered strongly. Also, we're all concerned about our property values. Realtors that the neighbors have talked to have all said, "This will decrease our property values," which have not, not been affected strongly by this current decline in real estate values.
Ma'am, can you please wrap up your comments?
I will.
Thank you.
I think I've got it. I think that's everything. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
My name is John Schrader, and I happen to live at 512 Boyd Mill Avenue, so I'm not too far from here. I've known about this project for quite some time and have watched the progress with it. I have done a similar project behind my house on the corner of Boyd Mill and Glass Lane, where I subdivided three lots out. This property has been zoned R3 for a long time, and your concern is not trying to change the zoning, but does it fit within the zoning capability, which this particular development does? Boyd Mill is probably the most eclectic street in all of Franklin, and it goes from apartments on one side to condos on the other side, to probably the largest antebellum home in the City of Franklin, and everything in between. We have cottages, we have houses that have, we have many lots who have been subdivided in this particular area. There's another antebellum home or older home that's off Buckworth that two or three lots were subdivided out in front of it several years ago, or 10 or 15 years ago. There is a, there is an effort, a lot of times, to do infill, and we've seen as a city that infill is something that's acceptable for us. Almost all of downtown is zoned R3. We've seen many cases where lots have been subdivided with very attractive homes. I think this will be an attraction to our neighborhood. It provides some infill, which our city looks for and likes to have. The city was gracious enough several years ago prior to my being elected mayor to put lights and sidewalks and curbs and gutters, which makes this street much more compatible for pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic, which there's a lot of, but it makes it very walkable, and it's a walkable community, and it can withstand eight additional homes. And I think the developer has done a great job in working with the city, and I would recommend that you approve it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Adam Bellish. I'm here tonight just to speak on behalf of the Urban Design Task Force of the Sustainability Commission. I'm also the co-chair of the Sustainability Commission, but what I wanted to point out was that for the past two years, as part of the Urban Task Force, as we have worked on the City of Franklin Sustainability Plan, we have focused on two main things. One of those is proper infill development, or development anywhere within the city limits in conjunction with the land use plan, and development that is appropriate based on the infrastructure that's in place. You've heard a lot of that discussion tonight. And so, I simply wanted to suggest approval of this concept, because it meets those requirements. It's something that's already zoned. It's in keeping with the land use plan, and similar to what the mayor just spoke on, it's infill residential development in one of the most dense areas in Franklin, near the city-town center. So, with that, I would just ask for your consideration. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I sure wouldn't want to be in your seat. I'm Peggy Gaines. I live at 503 Boyd Mill Avenue. I've been looking for about an hour and a half at your sign here, historic city of Franklin, Tennessee. I'm afraid if we keep things like this up, the new logo will be progress before preservation. We've lived there for 10 years. All our neighbors have done like we've done. We've put our house on the Historic Register. We've spent a lot of money preserving them. This year alone, we, after we redid everything in 2000, and the house was falling apart, we came in, we bought it, and just this year alone, we've put in $55,000 in renovations, after all the major renovations. Landscaping, one bathroom. We preserved the original four hardwood floors, saw through the house, 100 years old. We've did landscaping. We're not anywhere near through. We were going to spend another $60,000. And not that this makes any difference to anybody else probably but me, but the point I'm making is, why would we put more money into that property if we're going to have nine houses across the street, new houses, cottages? We're not even real sure what they're going to look like, because each construction company that comes in and buys a lot can construct their own house. That could be eight different people coming in, eight different companies. What if they don't make it? What if they get halfway done with their house? That's a concern of ours. You know, I might as well take my money out in my backyard and burn it after, of course, I get the permit that I'm supposed to get for burning anything in the yard. And last year, we had a house in Arrington we sold. We were going to pick up two other houses in the neighborhood. There's two houses, actually, in our neighborhoods that we like. Instead of investing in those, heck, we're going to get a sailboat. You know, we lived part of the time in New Orleans, too. We'll buy a house down there. You're going to run people like us away that come in and want to do a historic house, that we want to put our money where our mouth is. I did an article, our house, 503 Boyd Mills, 50,000 Leadership. I got 100 and something calls, "How to Put Your House on the Historic Register," people that want to do that, that want to do that in Franklin. The next article we're going to do, the article that comes in after that, what am I going to say? You've got to fight the overlay commission? You've got to come in, you can't put a fence up? You know, I wouldn't recommend it to people right now. And I love this town. I love this city. I haven't been here that long. I came from the lake, from Hendersonville. But I don't, I don't want our, our little spot of heaven to go away, and I don't think a lot of people do. During the fundraising for the theater, any of your historic buildings, I mean, I was in development. I know how hard it is to raise money. And if you take the individuals, like our people in our neighborhood, that come in and actually save these places, you know, what do you have left? I guess that's all I want to say. I just, you know, it just really bothers me, and I'm a little emotional today, and I usually don't get that way. I'm for people, you know, that can make an investment. I think it's wonderful, but I think it's a bad PR move for the city. I think it's, I think you're going to run people off, and I just don't think it's fair.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, is there someone representing the applicant?
I'm Brian Eccles with Steitz and Harbison, and Jason Goddard is also here, who did the land planning and design. Obviously, in your package, you have a recommendation for approval from staff with no conditions. The applicant has met all standards for approval, all standards according to the zoning that is placed on the property. In addition to that, as you've heard earlier, and as you have in your information, this property has gone before the Historic Zoning Commission, both in terms of a design, and will continue to go before the Historic Zoning Commission with each residence as it comes in, to ensure not only that it meets the character of the community, but also the specific design guidelines of the Historic Zoning Overlay. Notices come before you before. There were concerns, I think, about how much exposure there had been with the neighbors. There had been multiple meetings, at least two formal neighborhood meetings, over, near, close to 50 mailings associated with each of those. A number of people have discussed this. Some of you, you've heard from tonight in opposition, some of you've heard in support, but there's a vast number of people who've also met with the developer. The developer has met with the staff, has complied with all those requests to bring this project in a way that not only meets the standards, but is also sensitive both to the neighborhood in terms of its character and to the neighbors. The setback issues, I think you can see from your material that the setbacks here are more than the property, almost double or triple the property immediately opposite this on the other side of the street. immediately opposite this on the other side of the street, and very similar to the setbacks from the other properties on this street. This is, as you heard one supporter say here tonight, this is a very eclectic street. There are condominiums, there are apartments, there are modern houses, there are antebellum or other historic properties. This will fit into that eclectic character in a way that supports that. Because the applicant has met all standards, we ask that you, as a commission, approve this site plan and plat tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay.
Stereo.
Yeah, really.
I just wanted to say, I think this is a great use of this infill property as an infill development. It meets all the guidelines. There's Franklin Manor Apartments next door. We have Lawwood Town Homes. It's been there for a long time. We have the condominiums up the street, and we do have mixed uses. And I just feel like that this is a good use of this project, and I'm going to support it. The setbacks are appropriate as well.
Thank you.
And there are people who, the city of Franklin is a great place to live, and that's why we have a school issue right now. So more people are wanting to come in, and that's why we are having to build new schools. So people will continue to come. I don't think we have an issue with people wanting to leave.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just, just one, without, without repeating what's already been said. Like, this is probably the first project review plan, staff recommendations, comments, conditions of approval, where there's none, that I can remember seeing. And that's certainly a compliment to the person, the individuals, and there are individuals who've made the designs and went through the extra effort to meet and satisfy all of the demands, all the requests that we made last month. My, my comments, my concerns have been alleviated by and large, and I plan on supporting it also.
And I'd also like to add, what really kind of sealed the deal for me also is the Franklin Historic Zoning Commission, because I am sensitive to the fact. I've, I've always been one that tries to consider how it impacts people who already live there. It's okay for people to come in and make a profit and all that, but how does it affect people who live there? And if you can get the Franklin Historic Zoning Commission to, you know, to lay off of you and say, yeah, we're okay with it, you, in my opinion, speaks highly of your, of your development, and that helped lay one of the last issues that I had with this. Outside of the fact that some other things were answered from the last month as far as talking to the neighbors and all of that, which really always puts me on a no vote for that. So I will be able to support this project then.
Well, I, I think Tim made that point, and I'll do it again. Each home will come before the Historic Overlay Zoning Commission for approval and for the architectural review, so there's not going to be eight different, well, there may be eight different, but they'll all be individually scrutinized. It will not be just a, a plan where all eight of them are jumped, are lumped in together.
All right, good. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. Item 29, ordinance 2010-45, to be entitled, ordinance to revise the permitted uses in the Scientific Research Overlay District.
Mr. Chairman, this has been the subject of discussion for quite some time, and at this point in time, we would like to talk about the revisions that staff has made to the Overlay District. Primarily, the, we are now putting back in as permitted, as permitted uses, office use, educational use, and clinic uses, but only as they relate to the actual Scientific Research Overlay District. We understand that an office that is not related could be any kind of office, could be an office for any type of organization. We also understand that a clinic could be any type of clinic if it is not tied to the Overlay District. That is why staff wants them tied to the Overlay District, but believes that this interpretation of the ordinance would be such that the developer could do what he needed to do in a proton-type situation or a scientific situation, but still make sure that we're covered, that we don't get unintended consequences of a use that we don't want to see.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience, other than the applicant, want to speak to this item?
Feel like I've been here before on this subject. Brian Echols with Steyson Harbison, representing a property owner that this is likely to be applied to. I have made this request in the past. We're, we're a lot closer than we used to be. I only have one objection to the way this is worded, and that is with respect to clinics. The proposed change puts clinics as an accessory use only to the Scientific Research Primary Use. Now, I have to tell you, I'm not quite sure what the Scientific Research Primary Use, and that's exactly my concern. I'm not quite sure what a clinic in support of that use would be. I ask only that clinics be put as a primary permitted use, because it is likely to be that standalone clinic that would be supportive of these things. There are, and, and I think you all know, at least on the Iron Horse property, we've been having discussions, and we're continuing to have discussions with regard to proton therapy. That would be a standalone clinic. Now, there are some great science and research uses that that can be used for, and the balance of the property could also be used for scientific and research, and we're clearly have that in contemplation. But to say that a clinic has to be accessory to a, a, a Scientific Research Use, I think any developer, any investor would come in and say, can I put a proton therapy clinic? Can I put any other kind of clinic here? And we would have to say, we don't know, or at, and maybe know at worst, but we don't know at best, and that's troubling. And that's why we ask that clinic be permitted in this as a primary use. That would remove it up to the 2A instead of the 2B category, as the staff suggestion is here tonight. That's the only change I believe is necessary from my client's standpoint, and I ask that you consider that as an amendment to staff's proposal. Thanks very much. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, well, let's hear a motion.
I have a conflict in voting on this item, so.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
Moving seconded. Go ahead.
Staff, tell me what you think. I, I see where he's coming from with the clinic. Can you tell me what the rationale, or, or was it just you just grouped it in there? What's the rationale for having clinic as only an accessory use?
I think my rationale for that is that although I know Mr. Echols is speaking of a clinic for a proton, it could be any kind of clinic. Once this is approved as a primary use, it could be any kind of a clinic. It, you know, it could be a methadone clinic. It could be anything, you know, that's not very unlikely, extremely unlikely, but it could be, you know, it, it is now a permitted use.
And there's nothing to prevent us, and then on the other hand, because we're speaking, we have to, of course, legislate for the general because we don't have anything specific in front of us. There's nothing that will prevent, say, if a client said, I do want to do a proton therapy, whatever. So, yeah, I, I understand. Thanks.
Okay. The final mental description of the ordinance is a Scientific Research Overlay District, right? So that's, does that affect, even though you've got permitted uses now that says hospitals, and if we wanted to move clinics up there, does that affect, does the primary description of that ordinance also affect those permitted uses, or is that sort of independently reviewed? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I think it would probably be independently reviewed, and I think you can, you can look at it fairly broadly. What is the scientific research, and how does a clinic fit into that?
Well, the, the description of the ordinance is Scientific Research Overlay, but if you look at the permitted uses, it doesn't say a Scientific Research Overlay Hospital, or Research Hospital, or Scientific Research Clinic in this case. And that, that's where my question is, is if we don't delineate that as a permitted use, and we do what the applicant's asking to move clinic into permitted uses, does that open it up to be any kind of clinic, and any kind of hospital, or any kind of?
Yes, it would be a clinic as defined by the common ordinance.
Yes.
Would be broadly.
Any clinic, yeah.
So really, it's not a Scientific Research Overlay?
It, it was as approved by the Plan Commission and the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
It also allowed offices as a permitted use, period, you know, so.
Right.
So if it says offices as permitted use, until we got this, as I understand it, that meant that we couldn't say offices associated, it limited to offices associated with that. So, I mean, I hadn't done anything with this, but I thought that it kind of handled some of the concerns.
Okay. Any other discussion? So we have a motion and second to approve as is. Any other suggested amendments, comments, or anything? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. All right, ordinance 2010-47, to be entitled, ordinance to amend Chapter 3, Section 3.4.4 and 3.4.5, and Chapter 4, Section 4.3.2 of the City of Franklin, zoning ordinance regulating development within the floodway overlay district and the floodway fringe overlay district.
Mr. Chairman, basically, we talked about this at work session a little bit, and what we are asking this evening is that it be considered that new, that properties can be rebuilt after a flooding incident. We are asking to defer the next two items while we have an opportunity to discuss those in further detail, and we are asking that certain portions of this ordinance be stricken from the ordinance.
Okay.
I believe that, that Alderman Peterson has that language.
Okay, let's do that as an amendment.
Okay, okay. Well, then I move for approval.
And I'll second.
Okay, moving seconded.
And, and now, I guess unless there's a comment.
Yeah, I know. Is anybody in the audience want to comment on before we move on?
Okay.
Okay.
The, the suggested changes, first of all, because the second, the last two will be delayed, then that, that, if you're looking on page two, at least what I'm looking at here.
Handwritten two?
Uh, yeah, no, handwritten three, excuse me.
Handwritten three, okay.
Handwritten three, okay. That bottom half of it needs to stay in because we are not following through right now with the other two ordinances.
So item four would remain as is?
Uh, four, in parentheses, would remain, okay, right now. Right above that, three, oh, gosh, wait just a minute. Look, yes, two, big, 2B, excuse me, 2B, would be changed to reflect what was in our previous or, previous ordinance. Construction of lots of record established prior to July 1, 2008, in accordance with the following provisions. There's a new I, which says new construction or substantial improvement of any residential, residential building shall have the lowest floor, including basement, elevated to no lower than one foot above the base flood elevation. Should solid foundation perimeter walls be used to elevate a structure, then openings sufficient to facilitate the unimpeded movement of floodwater shall be provided. Then what you see is I here would become 2I, because then that goes ahead and says industrial, commercial, or the business shall be allowed to enlarge, expand, or that, that stays what, right here is just numbered 2I.
Okay.
Okay, on 3I, residential structures, again, leaving out the, and accessory structures, because again, those were part of the other, shall be allowed to repair, rebuild, and, and/or expand, has been removed, subject to the provisions of 5.8.5.4B1. Okay.
Okay.
The 5.8.5 needs to be removed because that's part of 2010.
Oh, that, okay, so let's, so let's just stop at.
It would be some provisions of, of parentheses four, right under that.
Take the other.
Okay.
parentheses four.
Okay, so, subject to the provisions of four, oh, right, which then would become the very next, the very next item, because then the, the rest of, oh, okay, okay, subject to the provisions of four.
Wouldn't we not also have to take out that in now, the 4I?
I, I think, I think it is out. That's what I have, I have marked out.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Marked out here, uh, that.
So there's just three I's?
It's, there will be three I's. But the, but the new, the new number one.
Is what.
Would be their key.
Does your number one, or your first I, does that allow new construction in the floodway?
It says, well, as I understand it, if something is damaged more than 50%, then it will either be elevated, as stated here, or have to be rebuilt at one foot above, where the lowest floor would be no lower than one foot above the base elevation. And I believe that's the flood, that's the FEMA requirement.
That's not new construction on an existing lot.
It is on, on the existing lot, because what you don't see here is that there's also, you know, they, they just put in the ones that were being changed. There's another one that's in the zoning ordinance now that's number six that says, that, that says more about that, ordinance, lots of record established prior to July 1, 2008. And this does say that also. Before we got the I, then let me read that again. Construction of lots of record established prior to July 1, 2008, in accordance with the following provisions, and that's where I, 2I and 3I come in.
And this will allow them to rebuild?
That's right.
And then the new construction that you were alluding to.
But the new construction will have to be, the rebuilding, you know, would have to be in accordance with the flood law, because that's what the flood insurance law requires.
But as a clarification, even if it wasn't a rebuilding, if it was a lot of record that currently didn't have anything on it, it could be.
That's right.
It could be constructed.
Right, right. Yeah, I should say that. That's right.
Okay.
Because it's constructions of lots of record.
I second.
Did we have a motion?
She did. Oh, that's fine.
I moved to amend, saying, saying this.
I did make the original motion.
No, she didn't say that.
I made the original motion, but then I immediately moved.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I don't think she got all of it. She gave her coffee.
Well, well.
All right.
We got it now, we got it.
Thank you. Marcia, you second?
Yes, I did.
All right. Any discussion on this motion, the amendment to the main motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. Is there, any other discussion on the main motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor of the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, no? Nice have it. Okay, and then items 31 and 32, we want to defer for 30 days, next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Move to defer?
Second.
Items 31 and 32. Okay, there is a second and a main, a main motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. All right, I think if I'm not right, if I'm not mistaken, that's the end of our agenda, so is there a motion for special, or whatever it's called?
I'll move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.